Call to me into order. I invite you to join with me in the invitation. Dear Lord, we come to you in prayer at a time when we celebrate freedom to people of our nation in joy and respect. We ask for protection for all people, our military and our leaders. In times of concern, we ask for acceptance and love of all individuals. If you have created us as equal, let us move beyond hatred and discord and show respect to everyone. Make us the eyes and ears of the community so that we hear and see what is needed and let us make decisions that encourage us all to help one another. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
First item on the agenda is a special presentation to proclaim July as Parks and Recreation Month. Ms. Kaiser, would you like to come forward and read that or would you like me to read it?
I'll come forward.
I will read it and then I'll come out. Designation of July as Park and Recreation Month, whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of the community throughout this country, including Albemarle, North Carolina, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increases cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illness such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyle. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. And whereas Park and Recreation, programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development, and whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Albemarle, North Carolina recognizes the benefits derived from the Parks and Recreation Resources. Now therefore be it resolved by Albemarle City Council that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in Albemarle. Ms. Kaiser, would you like to say anything?
No, I just wanted to, or I'll just say that we have a great Parks and Recreation program that, and it continues to grow here. I'm super excited and while I'm out up here today and my staff is not here, they work 10 or 12 hours a day in the summer. So it's hard to get them here on a July evening. So in fact, there, some are still working now, so. But they are the backbone and they, I represent them and all kudos go to them. We're just excited about the things we're able to do in our community and help grow it. The theme this year is where community grows, so I think that's a perfect theme.
Awesome.
As the mayor's coming back, there were many of those folks, of those good staff members out in the rain on Friday night cleaning up from Food Truck Friday.
And Lisa, if you will, tell all of your staff, thank you for what they do. We appreciate them very much. Moving on to number four, approval of the minutes, approval of the minutes from the June 19th, regular closed, regular and closed sessions and the July 26 recess session. I have one correction on the July, June 26 recess session, and it talks about the, where the city in Alcoa PD Liverfront, PD project said that the city was a, was lost. It was not the city that lost, it was individuals that lost, and we need to correct the minutes to show that individuals lost and the city approved the agreement. I'll entertain a motion to approve that if council has any further.
I'm trying to find that for you.
It's on the last page of the recess minutes.
First, at the first paragraph.
I pointed it out to Ms. Stone. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes with that correction. Motion by Councilmember Hall, excuse me, Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to agenda adjustments, council, you have one at your desk tonight for a road closure for Union Chapel AM Zion Church. I would like to add that to the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on next to public hearings, we have three public hearings, and let me first announce upfront that the request for this annexation has been withdrawn, so there will be no further proceedings on that. Council, I'll entertain a motion first for ordinance 2313A to close the public hearing. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next, ordinance 2309, long lake development request for voluntary annexation. B, I entertain a motion to close that one.
A move.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Ordinance C, ordinance 2310, consider zoning for long lake development, zoning map amendment 2304.
May the public hearing be closed.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Again, I will state that has been withdrawn from the city for consideration by the developer. If at any point in the future it should come back to the city, the entire process would start over with all the notifications and public hearings.
Just point of clarification, if, if department head knows it right off the bat, when and how did you get the request to, I call it pull it or to take it off the agenda or just to, I mean, what, what form did it come in when? Okay. And was it upon their request then? Thank you very much for the clarification.
Number eight, administrative reports are in your agenda. Council, have any questions?
I don't think they are. There's not any today. That, that was on there by mistake. The calendar is, but, but there was no administrative reports, just the calendar. Right. The only thing I would add to the calendar would be in October, the Fall Festival that we normally do, in the past couple of years, we've done a three-day event, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and this year it's only going to be on Thursday, and that is Thursday, October 26th. So if we can add that since other things are on the calendar.
Moving on to consent agenda, consider road closures for Sugar Hill Reunion and to consider road closure for Union Chapel AM Zion Church for back-to-school bash.
Move to approve, second.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. I have no unfinished, unfinished business. Moving to new business, consider setting a public hearing for a request to annex approximately 86 acres on City Lake Drive, annexation 2302. Staff, would you come up and just make a few comments?
Mayor, we don't have anything prepared to any comments on this at this time. This is, this is typically one of the items that we go on as a consent agenda item, but it is under new business right now. This is just the formal establishing the public hearing time and accepting the petition.
We are requesting set a public hearing for August the 21st to consider this, is that correct?
That's what's requested, yes.
Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Whitley, approve the public hearing for August 21st. Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Ma'am, I can't allow anyone to speak until it comes before council. This is not a public hearing. So I'll have to, I can allow you that night, or you can send your written comments, but I can't allow you to speak before that because it would not be proper.
Currently, our policy, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Birch, does not allow for video conferencing at this point?
Entertain any comments you want to submit beforehand for council's consideration at that meeting.
That she can submit them in.
Submit them to the city.
Submit them in writing.
Or the public hearing can be left open.
If council.
And, and the public hearing can always be left open.
Council can do that.
As this past one has been left open for a while.
11B, information, street preservation and maintenance project update. Ms. Ferris, do you have any?
Well, we didn't have anything in terms of representation, Your Honor, so the information in the agenda package is, is what we do have, which is, of course, the contract has been let, the contractor does anticipate mobilizing on the project this month. Going to start with the two most visible elements, two most visible parts of the project, and then proceed from there. So we'd anticipate once they do mobilize, because of mobilization costs, you know, it wouldn't be, make sense for the, for the contractor to mobilize and then pull equipment away. So once they do begin later this month, we anticipate them working through to completion. And if there are any specific questions regarding the project, you know, the pub worker myself could attempt to answer those.
I think one of them is, talk about it South Second.
Is that one project or all that list we have?
Well, it's the whole list, right. Yes, I'm sorry.
I think one of the early ones you're talking about is South Second.
Second Street, that's correct.
Will we have all of our work done before that? The council has it?
And if you will, South Second, I know that North Second is not on that list, it's only South Second, but North Second there is, over the weekend, has, there is a huge pothole now, and you may have already gotten it.
There is a section of North Second that's over there.
Is, okay. Then I will, then I'll finish, it's right there at Salisbury, on Salisbury Avenue and, and Nor, and North Second. It just happened this weekend.
Yeah, I hit it, I hit it twice.
North Second, thirteen, that's all there is, is the north part of North Second.
It's just north of it.
I think, I think it's on the DOT section.
It was repaired today by DOT.
Sorry about that, Mayor, I did not realize that. So the other question I would have then about this, what is before us today, is that school starts early this year, and this is an entrance right at Berry Avenue and East Albemarle School. So, you know, if there's any way that we can push to get that done before we get children and school buses and all that in there, that would be advantageous.
Berry's, Berry's one of the, one of the first two streets for buses to be started.
Right.
And I just hope my car can survive that street stretch on South Second Street in front of the post office.
Well, that should be very, very soon. Moving on, coming around the table, Mr. Ferris.
Nothing bad.
Mr. Townsend.
Just a few things, as I'm sure everybody probably will, I want to also extend congratulations to Brett Lauter on being taken notice. Want to extend congratulations to our Assistant City Manager Darren Rhodes for representing the city well at the North Carolina Economic Development Association Conference. Job well done, thank you. And last but not least, got a young man in the community that's 15 years old, he's been in a little competition, his desires to become a shell, and thus far, he's, this is a national competition, it was 92 contestants nationwide, he's the, he's been the only teenager, and out of 92 contestants, thus far, he's made it in each round and he's down to the final 10. This, up each day, I guess people can vote, and this coming Thursday, they'll narrow it down to five candidates. Young man, name is Taj McClendon, a lot of you may know his father, he'll be inducted into the Sports Hall of Fame next Monday, TA McClendon, and his mother runs a business here in town, her name is Lusrie House. But I would just, I wanted to give him some recognition because if he can make it to the finals and is selected, the top, top person will win $25,000 and be featured in a magazine called Taste of Home. I think that's a significant accomplishment for a young man from Albemarle, Stanley County, 15 years old, to be competing against nationally known, recognized shells and be in the top 10. Just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Bramlett.
My wife said I must say this. Whoever thought of putting those street signs up on, instead of having posts on the, the thing, putting them over where the, the stoplights are? Thank you, thank you, thank you. That is a great thing. And, and you know, I, we've got, we were developing a connection with Cincinnati, with Brett Lauter going there and with BJ Hill already there, and, and the number, the number of pro football players we have now in, from our area, and, and a general manager, folks, there aren't many small communities would have that sort of thing. I think that's a great source of pride for us. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Aldridge.
No, sir.
Ms. Hall.
Just to follow it from last meeting, two things from the last meeting, and then I've got a couple of other things. There was a, there was a comment made about Second Street Alleyway, and we, nobody really knew exactly where that was, is, did, were you able to determine where that was, Mr. Ferris? It was an assumption.
Right.
That it might be, and the minutes indicated it, and it was an assumption that we were talking about that little alleyway behind the North Street, but we were not sure, and I just was wondering if you'd followed up on, if that's what our ED, Economic Development Director was indicating, if that's where it was.
No, I didn't follow up on it. There was, I mean, there was no other alley that it could have been, so we left it at that.
Okay. And follow-up, and, and I guess it's because I keep seeing the reference, and I guess I look at planning and zoning, our current land use plan, help me Kevin, is of 2028, right? And when did we do that one? 2008? And are we in the thought process of doing another one? And I'm just, I throw that out there because Central Carolina Council, Central Carolina Regional Government, has been doing some updated land use plans with some areas. Very good. Very, very good. Thank you very, with the September dinner meeting with planning and zoning. And I guess a follow-up to that, do we know that date? Have we been given that date? Okay. If, if Cindy can figure that out so that we can put that on our calendars, thank you very much. And another follow-up from our last meeting was that of boards and commissions. And it's something we need to think about, and we, about how it is we do it. Right now, we allow folks to submit applications for what they want to be a part of, and that list is complete of a lot of different boards and commissions, and I don't mind, I think I got chastised, and I don't mind being chastised, for bringing up a name to a board that the person had asked to be on. So we, we need to talk within ourselves if we're going to do that, if we're going to allow folks to submit their names for thing, for boards and commissions they want to be on, and to prioritize one through whatever, what they want to be on, then we need to be, come to consensus. The person was there and had, you know, said that's what I want to be on and had a, had history of being on them in other places. So we need to talk about that at some point. If we're changing any of it, because I felt really bad, but I knew I had followed the protocol of what, you know, allowing people to submit their names. So that was a follow-up from last meeting. Three other things, on April the 26th, the burn occurred at Baden Road and Spate Road, that's when we were able to burn that building down. And thank you, Kevin, for the follow-up, but it's still not been cleaned up yet, and, you know, for whatever reason, and I know there's been, I don't know exactly the specifics, but I have folks that ask me on a daily or every other day basis, okay, it's, you've got it burned down now, but it's not cleaned up yet.
Well, and the issue was, it looked like he was cleaning up when it first happened, but it was not really cleaning up, they were going through to gather things to be able to recycle and that kind of thing, so it's been a long drawn-out process. Which brings me down to the bottom line, is if we have contracts with people, we, whether to clean up something or anything else, and we're going to give them a certain amount of money to do a certain job by a certain date, we need to really enforce that. And I, granted, I understand medical emergencies and that kind of thing, but this particular incident, we just drug on and on and on, so that, the Baden Road. Morgan Hills subdivision?
Are they, how many houses are out there finished that, do you know, Kevin? A percentage, do you know where they are? Okay. In Phase One, and we've approved two or three? Okay, out there, okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's it.
Twitter.
Just a couple of quick things, I finally got a opportunity to ride through the business park out there the other day, if you haven't done that, roads in good shape, it's beginning to take place, and I was, it was nice to see what the terrain looks like through there. It's going to be really, really attractive park once it takes shape. The other thing, we did get a chance to, we're downtown Saturday night, to try out the new restaurant at Almaral Hotel, and it was good to see folks out walking up and down the street. I saw people who were taking note of the historic signs that he was mentioning on the post, so those are going to get some activity, I think, and people will begin to realize those are there. But with restaurants open, stuff going on out, City Lake Park, Wampus Cat Ball Games, there's a lot of things going on downtown or in the Almaral area, but especially activity going on downtown. And I almost hate to do this, but I think I'd be remiss if I didn't notice the passing of a landmark here in Almaral that would probably be nostalgic to some people, the Whataburger oning that got smashed in the storm, that was, I'm sure some people spent a lot of time there years ago. That's it.
Are you looking at someone?
No comment. No comment.
No.
I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811, A 3 and 4 to consult with the city attorney and economic development.
A move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. If anybody's back, I'll entertain a motion, we'll go back to regular session.
A move.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Coming out of closed session, which we met for to consult with a city attorney and economic development, we have a few motions to make. The first one, I'll entertain a motion that we decline the submittal for the old police department and go back out with another RFP to get new submittals and make it available and see what we get this time. Do I have a deadline on when we want to end that process? 30 days?
August 31st.
60 days?
Sixty.
August 31st.
Well, how soon can we go out?
Well, it's going to give you a time to ride it. How about September 31st?
September 30th.
That sounds better.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next, council discussed the waste management contract for next year and have decided to notify Waste Management, will we not be renewing their contract for the next year? And council has decided to pursue a couple of options. One, council will, I'll entertain a motion that council will take into consideration bringing all of the yard waste, and by that I mean limb pickup, yard pickup, and loose leaf collection in-house, and do that with our in-house personnel. I'll entertain the first motion, starting July 1 of next year.
A move.
Motion by Councilmember Hunt, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion.
Could you just repeat the motion, what you just said? I want to make sure I heard it correctly.
The motion was to bring in the yard waste, and that includes limb collections, loose bulk collections, and.
Loose leaf.
Loose leaf collections in-house, and would be offered by our in-house personnel, and we will get ordered equipment to make those arrangements. Everybody good with that? Okay. All in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
All right. Seven, one, Cindy, you with me?
Six.
Six, one.
Six, one. All right, and the last one is to go out for RFPs for waste, solid waste, Ross, help me out. Solid waste collection service consisting of recycling.
Weekly MSW.
Weekly MSW.
Biweekly recycling.
Biweekly recycling.
Bulk items consisting of C and D and white goods.
We will go out for RFPs on that and look to get bids to start that contract also July 1 of next year.
A move.
So do we want, but do we want a date on there? Do we want a date, or do we need to do a date with that RFP, or we're just putting it in your hands? I'm just throwing that out there. Okay, what, I mean, that's.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember, was it Townsend? Townsend? Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Anything further to come before council?
Between now and our next meeting, there's six UGRI players plays, and there are 10 home Wampus games, only 10 between now and our next meeting.
How many of us going to the Sports Hall of Fame next?
That's right, Sports Hall of Fame.
Where is it? Next Monday.
When, when are we going, when can we buy tickets?
Cindy will have the tickets, so we'll need to see Cindy between now and next Monday.
I need two. Yeah, one for each one. No, my, my son was on that team. It was the tight end.
It was the tight end, and he wanted to come down and, from Sparta, and make TA.
I don't need, I don't need them.
Get with Cindy after the meeting, we actually are selling those in utilities, so you can out buy them at our desk downstairs.
And Electric Cities, we need to, because by the time we meet again, Electric Cities, everybody will have gone or not gone yet, but ready to go, so just, that's a reminder.
Anything further? I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn to August the 7th at 6:30 for our regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?